Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Muskegon City Commission Meeting for August 27, 2013. Before we begin, we will be led in prayer by Pastor Marcy Miller, Samuel Lutheran Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor?
Let us pray. Gracious Lord, we give thanks for those gathered here who give of their time and their energy for the good of this community. We pray for schoolchildren, teachers, administrators, as they get ready to go back to school. And we pray for a good year for them, especially those in transition. And we pray that churches and organizations, service people can all work together to end the violence that happens in this community, for the good of all. In the name of the Holy One, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. And before we begin, I'd like to welcome Council Michelle Landis, who is sitting in for John Schreier this evening. Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Now, we have a roll call, please.
Mayor Galrin.
Here.
Commissioner Hood.
Here.
Vice Mayor Spataro.
Here.
Commissioner German.
Here.
Commissioner Wieringel.
Absent.
Commissioner Turnquist.
Here.
Commissioner Markowski.
Here.
Thank you. Now, we have the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes, City Clerk, summary request, to approve minutes of the August 12th Commission Work Session Meeting and the August 13th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation, approval of the minutes. 2013-2014 Muskegon High School Community Officer Agreement, Public Safety, summary request, to approve the 2013-2014 Muskegon High School Community Officer Agreement. This agreement provides Muskegon High School with a community officer during the nine-month school is in session. Staff recommendation, approve the 2013-2014 Muskegon High School Community Officer Agreement. Emergency pump replacement of Sherman Lift Station, Public Works, summary request, authorize staff to purchase one new 25 HP flight submersible sewage pump from Kennedy Industries for the quoted price of $16,958. Staff recommendation, approve the purchase. City MDOT Agreement for the Reconstruction of Lakeston Avenue Between Park and Pec, Engineering, summary request, approve the contract with MDOT for the Reconstruction of Lakeston Avenue Between Pec and Park, and approve the resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign the contract. Staff recommendation, approve the contract and resolution authorizing the mayor and clerk to sign both. Request to refloat 10 Finger Piers at Hartshorn Marina, Public Works, summary request, authorize staff to contract with Great Lakes Docks and Materials in Muskegon to repair 10 floating docks in the large boat basin. Staff recommendation, authorize staff to hire Great Lakes Dock and Materials. Youth Basketball League and Open Gym Proposal, Muskegon Public Schools, Planning and Economic Development, summary request, the City of Muskegon has contracted with the Muskegon Public Schools for the management of the Youth Basketball League and Open Gym since 2010. The program has been successful, and the schools would like to manage the program for the 2013-2014 school year. The commission is requested to approve the proposal and authorize staff to enter into an agreement with the schools for oversight of the basketball program and the open gym program. Staff recommendation, to approve the Youth Basketball League and Open Gym Proposal and authorize staff to enter into a formal agreement with the schools. Gaming License Request from the Muskegon Rotary Foundation, City Clerk, summary request, the Muskegon Rotary Foundation is requesting a resolution recognizing them as a nonprofit organization operating in the city for the purposes of obtaining a gaming license. They have been recognized as a 501(c)(3) organization by the state. Staff recommendation, approval.
Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda. Are there any items you wish to have removed for further discussion? That'll entertain a motion. Commissioner?
I would like to actually have item E removed.
That was E?
Yes.
Any others? If not, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read, except for item E. Echo.
Second.
It's been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner Hood, to approve the consent agenda as presented minus item E. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Markowski?
I'm motion to approve item E, request to refloat 10 Finger Piers at Hartshorn Marina.
Second.
Who was the second? Thank you. It has been moved by Commissioner Markowski, seconded by Commissioner German, to authorize staff to hire Great Lakes Dock Materials LLC to refloat Finger Piers at Hartshorn Marina. Commissioner?
One of the reasons I requested that we had that removed is because the two items that were included with our packet for approval of this, one suggests repair and the other suggests new, and I just wasn't sure if the other entity had the ability to resubmit that bid for repair, if that was what we were choosing to do.
You will be joined by Mr. El Chatel. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, sir. We're requesting the repair right now, and the other, you're talking about the other company that bid $18,000. I believe they had, it had been shared with them that we're looking for a court of repair. They may have misused the language.
Just wanted to...
Anything else? If not, roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Public hearings, please.
Issuance of a Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate, 316 Morris Avenue, Planning and Economic Development, summary request, pursuant to Public Act 210 of 2005 as amended, the Hinman Company has requested the issuance of a Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate. The City Commission approved the creation of the Commercial Rehabilitation District on January 22, 2013. The certificate will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. The school operating tax and the state education tax are still levied on the new investment. The company will be investing over $450,000 in the building, which qualifies them for an abatement of 10 years. Staff recommendation, establishment of the Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate.
Good evening, Mr. Francis.
Good evening. This is for the Terrace Plaza Building. The investment has already been made with the Michigan Works moving in. We have Andy Wenzel here from the Hinman Company, if you have any questions. And as was stated, we did approve the district back in January, and the next step would be to approve the certificate.
So this is a follow-up to...
Yes.
...action we've taken in the past. Okay. Any...
Just one, and I don't know if this would be staffer from the applicant, but if we could just have a real short overview of the work that was done and the number of jobs that have been added?
Mr. Wenzel, can you address that?
Yes, Mr. Wenzel, all right?
I'd be glad to. Yes, my name is Andy Wenzel. I'm the Director of Development for the Hinman Company. Thank you very much for taking your time this evening. Yes, the work was a complete build-out of over, a little over 30,000 square feet of space for Michigan Works. They have moved in in July, and I'm happy to say that everything is working seamlessly. It's been a nice improvement. We're making good strides with that building, as we are with the Terrace Point Building. And so we're optimistic that the momentum will keep moving in that part of town. We're about 65% occupied, just so you know. So we've been, we had been struggling with a sub-50% occupancy in that building for many years. So we do appreciate your help and support. This certificate was part of the justification, although the certificate puts the freeze, it doesn't lower the taxes or give us a TIF, but it does help, every little bit helps. And we appreciate it.
So 65 and climbing for...
65 and climbing, yes.
Terrific.
Thank you.
That's great. Any other questions? Any other questions?
Well, yeah, but do you have any ballpark figures on the number of jobs that moved into the building?
I believe it was about 40, 40 jobs that moved in, yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions or input from the public on this matter? That'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. And go forward. Commissioner German?
Motion to close the public hearing.
And would you also then move to establish the Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate?
And motion to establish the Commercial Rehabilitation District.
Very good. Can you get a second?
I will second that.
Did you beat him up?
No.
It has been moved by Commissioner German, seconded by the Vice Mayor, to close the public hearing and establish the Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate for 316 Morris Avenue.
Mike's...
Mike, Mike.
I think the motion was to create the district. This is actually to establish the certificate.
Well, that's the recommendation.
Okay. Establishing the Commercial Rehabilitation...
I'm pretty sure I heard you say establish the certificate.
Establish the district?
No.
That's the next one.
It's the issue, the certificate.
Okay, this is for the, this is for the certificate.
Okay. Establish.
Okay.
Is that the one we can do?
Jump ahead.
We're on it. Okay.
So this is to close the public hearing, establish the certificate for the building on Moore Street for 10 years, correct?
That's it. Okay.
That's what I said.
Good.
I'm sure that's what I heard.
Any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. We wish the Hinman Group much luck and...
Thank you very much.
Your...
Item B, please.
Establishment of a Commercial Rehabilitation District, 500 West Western Avenue, Planning and Economic Development, summary request, pursuant to Public Act 201 of 2005 as amended, 500 West Western Avenue has requested the establishment of a Commercial Rehabilitation District. The creation of the district will allow the building owner to apply for a Commercial Rehabilitation Certificate, which will freeze the taxable value of the building and exempt the new real property investment from local taxes. The school operating tax and the state education tax are still levied on the new investment. Land and personal property cannot be abated under this act. Staff recommendation, establishment of the Commercial Rehabilitation District.
Are you back again, Mike?
Yes, hello. This is the first step in the process to get a certificate, to establish the district. If this is approved, we send it on to the county for approval. They have 30 days to approve or reject. After that, then they can apply for the certificate. They're looking at about a $165,000 investment. This is down at the Noble Building on West Western. They already have the Pigeon Hill Brewery as a tenant, and they're also rehabbing for a possible restaurant. And we have Chris Nass with the company here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Vice Mayor?
Well, we got part of it, but just, you know, what we heard from before, just a brief overview of the scope of the work and the number of jobs anticipated. If we could, please.
And ask Mr. Nass?
Nass, Christopher Nass. Good evening. Yeah, presently, we're looking at, once the full main floor is established and renovated, we're looking at probably adding about 60 jobs to downtown Muskegon.
Very good, so...
And presently, we have about 15 jobs in regards to the remodeling aspect going on presently.
What's your anticipated date of completion? Looks like you're making pretty good progress.
Yes. Right now, it's talking about somewhere in November, the two entities, you know, one has a signed lease right now, the other one's in negotiation, the restaurant is.
Okay.
So it's, publicly, I can't, you know, discuss that of who it is. But right now, both entities are looking at a November, mid-November opening.
Terrific. Very good. Commissioner Hood?
Are these going to be entry-level positions?
There's going to be all different levels, I believe. There's going to definitely be some skilled, as well as unskilled labor hired. You know, when you've got a, I'm not a restaurateur at all, but obviously, there are different levels there in regards to the restaurant that are available, in regards to customer service. There's going to be kitchen help, there's going to be delivery workers. And I see in the Pigeon Hill and the brewing aspect, there's going to be people in the production, because they're actually going to do the onsite brewing, so there's going to be production people, as well as customer service reps, you know...
These are going to be equal opportunity employees?
Oh, yes. Most definitely.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. You're welcome. Any questions or input from the public on this issue? If not, Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I would move that we close the public hearing and establish the Commercial Rehabilitation District for 500 West Western Avenue, as described.
Second.
It has been moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Commissioner German, to close the public hearing and establish the Commercial Rehabilitation District for 500 West Western. Any discussion? Not, roll call, please.
Commissioner Turnquist?
Yes.
Commissioner Markowski?
Yes.
Mayor Galrin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hood?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Spataro?
Yes.
Commissioner German?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Any other business from the commission? Now, I open to public input. I have a request by Ms. Shawna Hunter, if you'd like to come up to the podium, if we could just have your name and address, Ms. Hunter.
Thank you, Shawna Hunter. And I'm coming as a resident of Muskegon.
Can we have your address, please?
Sure. 1-866-DOWSTREET, that's D-L-W-D.
Over in Campbellfield?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes. I'm, well, I'm coming as a resident, but I'm also coming as an advocate. I know that street lights were removed mid-blocks to save money, and I'm for supporting that. However, I would like the city to use some discretion with those lights. And I did read that some discretion was being used based on angles or how the street was made. Right now, it says that if 31,000 lights, there are 31,000 lights, and 2/3 of those lights were mid-block lights, and if 175 lights were removed, at least $25,000 could be seen. However, I don't want to put costs before the safety of the residents. In that street and where that block was removed, there is children that will need to go to the bus stop, and the area is totally black. There is a handicapped individual across the street that requires nurses, that requires a lot of time, safety or individuals to come and see about that individual. There's three that I know of, senior citizens, two are 80-plus that are still mobile, and I myself is, I'm a little bit intimidated to go to my own car in my own driveway, and that's how dark it is. It is the first block off of Lakeston Avenue, and it tells you how dark that could be if that light from Lakeston is not lighting that area at all. Not only that, there are security lights above the individual's house who needs someone to bring him back and forth, or someone to come see about him, and it's not doing a thing. So I would ask that the city would put before the cost, or before saving money, to use discretion in the areas. I've seen that there is a place where the homeowners had the ability to say, "I want to pay for it." As far as I know, that wasn't really put out there that great. So it cost about, what, $1,500 to remove a light? I'm requesting that that light is put back in. I'm requesting that that light is put back in for the safety of the individuals that are on that street. And I've seen, I read, I think, in Dave Alexander's article, that it wasn't based upon violence in the community or anything like that. And there's not a high-violence area in it. But the safety is my concern for the professional individuals that would have to come see about the handicapped individual, for him being transported, for the children going to their bus stops when it's early and it's still dark. That is my request, to have that light put back in.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, there is one item I think we ought, because I just want to make sure there's no confusion on the issue.
Yes.
The only lights I'm aware of, that there is an outstanding opportunity for a local group of neighbors to pay for out of pocket, are the decorative fake gas lights in the Heritage Village area that were, had originally, until they were turned off, been paid for by the Muskegon Heritage Association. So I don't want anybody to get the idea that, you know, people can just pay for street lights. And they have not acted on that. So those lights are still deactivated. I believe there were a fair number.
Is that accurate?
Uh huh.
Okay. Thanks.
One additional comment or question. I just want to ensure that she's specifying that there is no physical structure for the light there, because I know, as we've run into, there are oftentimes lights that are out of service. And so I want to make sure that there's no structure in the space that you're specifying. There is no light at all, not just a light that doesn't work, is that correct?
Not now. They may have...
Okay. So I'm just making sure that's what you're referring to.
And there is, the, see, there is, they're on either side, there are children, across the street, there are children. And like I said, there's, there's a need for even medical attention sometimes, and nurse care, and you cannot see a thing.
Right. Mr. El Chatel, could you flesh out the decision made in 2011, what potential options there may or may not be?
Well, as you just mentioned, back in June, on June 14, 2011, we brought before you the bunch of maps and recommendation to remove about 30 lights, and the recommendation was a result of consumer at that time was trying to upgrade their distribution facilities, and they had offered us the removal of those lights at no cost to the City of Muskegon at a saving of, at that time was estimated about $6,000 if they had removed the 30 lights. As of about 4:30 this afternoon, I was informed that there was only 26 lights removed, one of which is the 1855 Dow. One was removed by mistake, which is at the intersection of Rademan and Lakeston that will be reinstalled. I guess, at the time, if you remember, the streetlight budget has always been an issue for probably the last 10-some years, if not longer than that, and staff had been tasked with looking at ways and means of reducing that 700-some, $50,000 or close to $800,000 budget. And we have since, your instructions have been working toward that goal and trying to, it's a very, I guess it's a very touchy situation. I do understand what the concerns are, but, you know, something has to give, if you will, and we have since saved, we have been able to save, probably, the city's budget right now is at $650,000, if that. So we have been trying to accomplish the goal or the policy that you guys set forward or set forth for us, and we're trying to establish the best possible conditions out there. We, if you recall, we've had a discussion at the work session, at which time we kind of discussed the criteria which we should follow to make sure that safety is not compromised, and also some saving is accomplished. And at that time, with this, at least my understanding at that time was, major intersections would have streetlights at the intersections. And back on June 14, 2011, there was a bunch of criteria, established five lines, if you will. At that time, said all major street intersections with another major street and/or local street must have a minimum of two fixtures. All local street intersections shall have a minimum of one light at that time, so, and, you know, on a boulevard and so on and so forth, and local streets, about 500 spacing between two lights is, and then we left an out for discretion, if you will, if there's curves, curvatures, rainy eyes, trees, something that obstruct, or creating obstructions, that staff would be allowed that discretion, if you will.
Okay.
So I don't know if that helps.
But that gives the history of the rationale, while still attempting to maintain the safety factor as far as intersections are concerned. We were going north of $800,000 a year in our electrical bill. Now, we're currently about 650, which is a savings of $150,000. We're looking for any additional savings with rehabilitation or updating?
Yes. There are a few things that we're looking at, that I think over the last probably five years, we have removed in access, as was stated earlier, we had over 3100 lights in the City of Muskegon, if not close to 3200. Since we have, we're down between the auditing of the city's streetlights database by consumer and the removal of streetlights, we're down to close to 2700, 27, 2800 streetlights.
And I remember some of the conversation at the time, too, concerns about safety, security, that may or may not be provided by those mid-street lights. Some of the information out there indicates that probably a better preventative is people being asked to turn on their front porch lights, like we do for National Night Out Against Crime, asking people to, you know, use their porch lights to help illumine the area and show a lived-in-house. I know that was part of the conversation as well, too, that we hope to encourage or soften the perception that the mid-light, you know, streetlight was the only course or the only provision for, you know, public safety. And basically, the streetlights are for traffic.
Pretty much so.
Pretty much so.
If I may just, by no means, I think as a staff or as a, I don't pretend to speak for you, but we have, we don't intend to minimize the feelings of everybody out there.
Absolutely.
We do understand the concerns that people have, but it's a compromise that it's almost a catch-22. It's a compromise that we all have to kind of deal with, and I do understand and realize the concerns that if the streetlight is in front of my house, I'd probably be doing the same thing, but that's where we're at, I guess, at this point, is what, we have a budget that, a general fund budget that was heading just north of $800,000.
It's probably better to put that savings of $150,000 into our other programs, including our law enforcement.
The question, the question is not the savings. I'm all for savings. I want us to save as much as we can, wherever we can, but there has to be a discretion on what we do, when we do, how we do. There is, that's not a straight, parallel street, so if you want to consider that a curvature. And then you did mention asking individuals to put their lights on, to use safety. There are, there is, I know, one safety light, a safety light, not just a house light. It is a safety light above the house of the gentleman who was in a wheelchair, and it is completely dark. It is completely dark. So the question is not about, it's not about the money, because I'm not against saving money. But the question is, what discretion and what criteria? I saw the five lines of the reasons why you took it out and how we would save. I saw that, but what criteria do you use when you say, "No, maybe this one won't be taken out"? That's, that's what I'm here for. That's what I'm advocating for, my neighbors for. Because like this gentleman said, and I respect him very much, what he said, if it was my neighborhood, I would feel the same way. So this is my neighborhood, and I need to know what can I do to get that streetlight back for the safety of those who travel on the street, because it is for traffic. And not only traffic, it does have a result...
And not only traffic, it does have a result of everything else in the environment. But for the traffic, you, I saw a car driving so slow down the street because that car could not see what was in front of it. And with the, with the fact that there are children around, if, if there was a child that got out at night or there was people walking at night, I mean, what, is there any criteria or is it just about money? Is it just about saving the money? Because if it was your neighborhood, would you want that? No.
Mr. Mayor, could I, I mean, first of all, I was on the commission when we took this vote and I want to take some ownership here. I mean, I don't think it's fair to leave staff out there. This is something we directed staff to do. And it is about the money. Plain and simple, it's about the money. We don't own the streetlights. Consumers Energy does. Their rates have been climbing. There have been over a thirty percent increase in what they're charging the city for streetlights. Our budget's been shrinking. We have less revenue coming in now than we did ten years ago. So when you're in that situation, you have to decide, where do you best allocate your resources for, in this instance, creating a safe neighborhood? And mid-block lights, which were costing us a lot of money, and we voted, what, five, six years ago to start removing them, they don't give you the same bang for the buck that a police officer in uniform does. And so for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think of that in terms of being a couple of police officers and a little bit extra. And that's where that money's been going so that we can maintain adequate public safety services. And I, I understand your frustration. I happen to live on a block where I, we've never had mid-block lights. And it's not a short block. There's a, there's a, or at least there has been up to this point, a, a bus stop for the school kids. But the bus stop is at a corner where there is a street light at the corners. And, you know, the criteria is where there's intersections and you heard or read it, there would be streetlights. So we all deal with this everywhere around the city. And you're not the first person to come forward and say, I don't want to lose a mid-block light. If we didn't have the financial issues that we've had to address and addressed at this point fairly successfully, as fact that we still have more, more money to provide services than, than some communities around the state, read the paper. You know, we've had to make some of these painful decisions.
And I, and I understand it and support that. I really do. But there, again, the question that I'm asking is what discretion? Is there one pole, two poles you can leave up? Is there three in the com... Excuse me. May I finish, please?
Well, you asked, what is the discretion?
But I wasn't done with my question.
The discretion is, well, you, you've been very clear.
Let's, let's wrap it up.
Yeah.
Let's, let's wrap it up.
The discretion is, is that if the road presents a traffic hazard because there is a curb or some other feature like that, that makes the drive, the, the traffic perhaps hazardous, if that hazard is not illuminated, that's where the discretion comes into play.
So wrapping it up, I would just like to say that the city of Muskegon will put the dollars, is that what you said, Vice Mayor, before the safety of vulnerable adults and senior citizens?
That's not what I said at all. What I said is, is that if we have a choice between funding our police officers and fire department and mid-block streetlights, that I think most of us, myself included, would choose funding our police officers and firefighters rather than mid-block, mid-block streetlights. So that's the choice that we were faced. And yes, it's a Hobbs bargain. It wasn't an easy decision to make. But having people who can actually respond to public safety situations, people who are on patrol to prevent criminal activity in the first place is a better use of those limited and shrinking resources than the comfort of a mid-block light.
Right. And part of my concern was the public safety that would have to visit that house, especially across the street, often with the individual who is being visited by nurses. And a lot of times, public safety is there, is going there. So that was part of my concern, looking, thinking about the officers, thinking about the, the EMTs that would have to visit. So again, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
And again, the, the dollars I see is more important than the vulnerable adults and the children.
Well, not, not in, not in our overall attitude. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address the commission? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Aye, motion to adjourn. Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Hood, seconded by Commissioner German, to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Same sign. If not, thank you all and good evening.